Are you in charge, Victor?
I look like I'm in charge.
You do. You look like you're totally in charge. Second? Although the chair does not normally make motion. You needed like three people to be able to not meet.
It could be a little bit more C people there, I think would be a way to...
Clearly are.
It's a little potato. Yeah. You didn't get the warning shot?
Yeah.
You good? Alright, perfect. That's just a little crust, righty?
Best attire you have tonight?
Huh?
Best attire you have today?
Yes.
Oh, actually, you're getting all sticks up there.
Yes, ma'am. You do. Me, how are you?
I'm alright, how about you? You're not that old. You're a, you're not a septuagenarian yet, are you?
Well, uh, too much.
I would not have guessed. I would've guessed sixteen and seven. And a half. Two seventies? Well, you don't look a day over sixty-eight.
Yeah. I'm actually forty-nine at the moment.
Oh, yeah. Let's not push it. Uh, and the pipes? Yeah. I didn't drive across any flooded areas today. The gutters seem to be handling it, but... It's bad down there. It's bad down there.
You're back!
I am.
I noticed.
The army hasn't come back, yet.
Now I came from Chicago.
They let me come back. Well, they did, they did pay my travel expenses, so, you know. Yeah, yeah, believe that. How are you? Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Just signed up Sam, our hate messages, and they were just very helpful.
Yeah, I like the, the URL. The URL.
I mean, two years, this great program, and that...
Oh, we're not gonna do this here. What's it, you tell us, a little more advanced?
I got it. You're right.
Got what? No, not, not for my, at work. No, not me.
I'm in it, but I don't, I can't figure out how to get to today's meeting. Normally, it's all set up already. Different device.
Yeah, and I can't hardly see it. Goodness gracious, how can you see what's happening?
Well, I don't know what happened. My kids were playing with it.
That's because you're logged in. I know what. You're not in the right URL. No, you're in the main one. Like, if you want to create via Jintag and everything, you can. The same.
Okay. I believe you. Oh, it was fine. It was a master guard, sitting in... Secret, secret, secret computers, but it doesn't mean it's that much more cool. No, it was just, it was good exercise. Lots of good soldiers with me. Happy to be back.
Good evening. We had a few subdivision plats on the agenda for the last meeting. And all three of them were, were approved unanimously. We had the Cornelia Circle, the Red Hawk Commons, and the Collins Mill. They're pretty straightforward. Every staff didn't have any concerns, and we didn't have any concerns. Collins Mill, that's over there off of Hopper Road.
Old Hopper.
Old Hopper, yeah. Oh, okay. In addition to the plats, we had, we voted on the revised amendments to Development Code, Article Seven, retaining walls, and Article Eight, landscaping and buffer yards. This was at our, we had some, it was brought to us at the prior meeting, and we had some questions, concerns, and staff brought us some revised things on it, and we approved it. That's all we have. Alright. Okay, alright, very good. Thank you, guys.
Hopefully Nicolette will be returning to set up. But we will go ahead and proceed. My name's Julia Thompson, and I serve as your Parks and Rec Director, but I also serve as the president for our Keep Cape Beautiful Committee. For those of you that may not know, Keep Cape Beautiful, it is a volunteer committee. It is non-council-appointed, although Robbie Guard is our council liaison. And we've been in existence since 2012. We reformed after it was Keep Southeast Missouri Beautiful through the efforts of then-councilwoman Loretta Schneider and Mayor Harry Rediger, who really felt strongly, along with many other citizens, that we wanted to try to keep Cape not only beautiful, but bring awareness to our community about how important it is for regional city and hub like ours to kind of take it to that next level. And so we were able to be readmitted under Keep Cape Beautiful. We do pay annual dues to the National Affiliate, which is out of Washington DC. The annual dues are $250. That permits us access to their web resources, their newsletters, information, webinars. It gets us listed under their website as a community that is committed to all of their tenants, which I'll let Mr. Langlois, he's our chairman, he'll be speaking next, but I'll tell you a little bit more about it. It's been a really great opportunity to highlight the awareness of how important our surroundings are. And I think you've seen a lot of information come out in the paper supportive of helping educate residents and visitors about how important and attractive Cape Girardeau is. So I'd like to introduce Brian Langlois. He is our chairman, and he will present the rest of our information.
Once again, welcome, Brian.
Thank you. Thank you, Julia. Thank you, Your Honor, for the privilege of having me here, Mr. Meyer and council members. Thank you very much. Julia gave a little information, background information on Keep Cape Beautiful, and I was hoping we'd have a little more representation here today on our members. We have a few of our people, but I would like to, I'd like to introduce the members of our committee to the council. Even though most of them aren't here, they, I think they need to be recognized. We have eight civilian members. We have one council liaison, Councilman Guard, as Julia mentioned. And then we have four staff members with the city. So that gives us a total of thirteen members right now. And our members are Ms. Laura Ritter, she is actually co-chairman, Ms. Loretta Schneider, who is here. Loretta, appreciate it. Ms. Casey Essner, Mrs. Stacy Peters, Mrs. Becky Mockerman, Mrs. Carrie Hurt, Mrs. Bonnie Svensson, of course, Councilman Guard. And then for the staff, we have Julia Thompson, Parks and Recreation Director, Brock Davis, Park Division Manager, Mike Tripp, Public Works, and Sharon Bergman, who does a fantastic job as the Secretary of the Committee. One of the things that the Keep Cape Beautiful Committee has been doing in conjunction with Keep America Beautiful is the litter index. I was part of that last year and also this year. And do all the council members have a copy of the litter index report? We are very happy to report that, as you can see, the litter index has actually gone down. And I'm not going to get into all these statistics. But in most of the wards and overall, it is better than it was last year. Don't know what all of the factors on that were. And just because it is low, though, doesn't mean that there aren't still challenges. On any given day, we do go out and, you know, in our neighborhoods and see trash in the street and cigarette butts, and we always need to, to keep aware of that. So I'll let you look that over at the end when I'm through speaking. If you have any questions on the litter index or anything else, I'll let you do that. Other programs that we have for Keep Cape Beautiful, as well as the litters, supporting the city's recycling efforts, and partnership with, with other organizations such as Old Town Cape. I saw Marla here, I don't know if she's still here, if she left, but... The university, we're doing some partnering with the university in trying to get more student involvement, United Way. And of course, the interdepartmental cooperation with nuisance abatement and with Public Works. Okay, current issues. One of the main things, you know, that we focus on in our committee is public awareness. And I think that that has really taken off in the last six months. I was fortunate enough to have an article published in the Missourian at the first of the year, which got some conversations started. They published a couple of things after that, so we have more people talking about it. And I think that could have been a factor in our lower litter index, you know, that more people are thinking about it, talking about it. We have the conversations out there. So we really want to educate the public as best we can. And I've been trying to do some media outreach with KFES and with the newspaper. And I'm thinking maybe even of expanding those efforts, you know, to try to, some of the other TV affiliates that we have in Marion and Paducah, or even, you know, as far as St. Louis. One of the main problems that we do have still is the litter and road debris and the cigarette, cigarette waste. I'm going to say something that, that I feel very strongly from the heart. All litter is harmful to the city, any trash, whether it's restaurant litter or any kind of litter. But one of the biggest problems that we have, and it's not just Cape Girardeau, but we do have a big problem with it here, is cigarette butt litter. And there really needs to be more awareness on that. It's one of the most toxic forms of litter that there is, as far as animals getting a hold of it, birds building their nest and choking on it. And then, being a river city, the cigarette butts going down into the river is a huge, has a huge environmental impact. In my opinion, one cigarette butt is litter. And I would really like to increase awareness for people who do smoke to please do not throw your cigarette butts out on the street or in public or private property in any way. Other issues that the Keep Cape Beautiful Committee is concerned with is public graffiti. We get a lot of graffiti on the, on the flood wall, and also on some of the public buildings, and that's something that we're always concerned about. Sinage, things like garage sale signs or people who just, you know, pop-up signs on television posts or anywhere, we're concerned about things like that. And of course, you know, this is, this is a big political season, so of course there are campaign signs all over, most of them legal, but not all of them. And also nuisance abatement, you know. Part of, part of keeping Cape Girardeau or any city beautiful is people taking care of their properties. You know, cutting the grass, cutting back any weeds. You know, just overall, having their properties look pretty and being a good representation for the city, whether they're a business or a residence. And that's something that we do need to increase awareness on, too. So that's another issue that we work on. Are there any specific questions from the council members about our committee or what we do or the report?
Really concerned about that cigarette butt issue, too. Seems like, definitely in intersections, they'll stop. And while they're waiting, they don't remember.
Well, you know, I appreciate that, Mayor. I appreciate you being concerned about it.
And it's traffic, like heavy traffic locations, so...
And part of it is ignorance or just not thinking about it or not knowing. I mean, I see otherwise very respectable citizens tossing their cigarette butts on the street like it's nothing. And there, there needs to be, you know, education that it's not nothing to do that. Every cigarette butt is, is litter, and it's a hazard, and every cigarette butt is a hazard. So I'm glad that you do have that concern.
Very concerned and mindful of the beauty of our city and for you and all the committee to be working diligently on this. We're making progress. I noticed a few twos that went to threes.
Yeah, yeah, there, there were some that...
Heck and there, say, in those wards and, you know...
Some went up, some went down.
Yeah, Ward, Ward one, with the neighborhood group, that one area, Cape Rock, Cape Rock, down.
Yeah, that, that for some reason has gotten really bad over there.
But all in all, it's, your evaluation is, in most cases, improved. To your credit.
Oh, thank you.
Our citizens' credit and education.
Thank you.
Keep, keep the pedal to the metal.
Thank you. One more thing is, I wanted to mention that, you know, what we've been doing, the beautiful property of the month, and we want to continue to do that. And we have given some recently to some smaller businesses, and the reaction of the people when they get it is, is amazing, you know. It can be like a really, a point of personal pride for them. Like with Ken Miles Insurance, she, she did the gardens in honor of her late daughter. And you know, that's something that was, that was so heartfelt. So if any of you or anybody you know, knows of a business or a property who really is going the extra mile to Keep Cape Beautiful, send it to us, you know, a recommendation, and we'll, we'll vote on it.
I want to echo the Mayor's expression of gratitude on behalf of the city for everything that you, your committee has done. And I can, you know, I can see based on the numbers that there is some improvement. Could you explain a little bit how you measure when you look at a street or intersection? What do you count? What do you look at, so I get a sense of where this comes from?
Well, we, we actually have a chart, you know, that, I forget exactly how it's worded. You know, one through four, you know, one, you know, being pristine, and then, you know, a little bit of litter, a lot of litter, and I forget exactly how it was worded, but out of control, you know. So with each section that we drive by, and we have it mapped out, we look at all the litter that's on the road, on the side of the road, and, and we go by that chart and mark it down.
So it's a, you don't count pieces of trash, it's more of a qualitative look, like compared to others and what we see?
Yeah, there's usually four or five of us in the van at one time doing it. So we, you know, we come to an agreement on, okay, this, this section is this number, this, this next section is that number.
Okay, thank you.
We've got several areas adopted. Are you working on getting more areas in streets or anything adopted?
I don't know, Julia.
That program might be best addressed for, we run that out of the Public Works Department. We help support that.
Did you want to answer it, Mike?
Yeah, we, we have a, a, we want to adopt a certain area. We can try to afford lock rates. Right now, it's kind of, it's, it's improved. It's visible, it's kind of black, but we're trying to push it when we can. Yeah, it's always nice to have, yes, contact, obviously. Hopefully, it'll all prove good. It's just kind of a kid mess. Church bicycle, also, contact, you name it. Yeah, so, hopefully, it'll, while we're at it, we'll, we'll mark it.
We, we appreciate the council. We appreciate the council concern and, of course, the time that Loretta spent as our liaison, and now having Councilman Guard, we really appreciate that.
Just also wanted to let you know that the, we currently do two cleanups a year. We do a spring cleanup in conjunction with Prince of Parks Day. But last year, we did a small, smaller downtown, we would do something in the fall, so we added a fall downtown cleanup. And then, when Elizabeth came on and started launching the United Way Days of Caring for this year, and we saw the timing was about right, we said, "Let's just coordinate our fall cleanup with the United Way's efforts." And so I'd like to introduce Elizabeth Shelton with United Way to tell a little bit more about that program.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you, Julia, for letting me piggyback on your time. I have been told that I have three minutes, so I am going to do my best to adhere to that. Hopefully, this isn't the first time that you are hearing about United Days of Caring, because this is a big deal, not only for United Way, but we believe for the communities that we serve. For those of you who aren't familiar, United Way of Southeast Missouri serves Cape Girardeau, Jackson, Scott City, Perryville, and Marble Hill. So we're trying to incorporate all four of these counties in United Days of Caring on September ninth, tenth, and eleventh. And we felt as an organization that it was important for people in our communities to see us at work, to see United Way at work in the communities. Because a lot of times, they only see the agencies that we support at work in the communities. And we, so we wanted to do something to demonstrate that and also to just get more people involved in giving back to the community. United Days of Caring is something that other United Ways have done. It's the first time in many years that this organization has done it, and I believe it's the first time we've ever attempted it over a whole weekend. But "go big or go home" has always been a philosophy of mine, so we're trying to knock it out of the park and hope that it will continue to build every weekend. Some of the projects that we have planned... Some of the projects that we have planned so far not only include Keep Cape Beautiful, but also we are working with Habitat for Humanity on two of their builds that they are supporting. Safe House for Women has projects. Some of them are listed on the flyer that I gave you. Some of these organizations are funded partners of United Ways, but many of them are not. And we are not keeping that as a stipulation. We want everybody to get involved. And we have schools, Jackson Public Schools will be having their children write letters to first responders, and it's my understanding Cape Schools will be doing something very similar to that. And some of the classrooms will go out and pick up around the playgrounds, and we just want everybody focused on giving back. Most of the projects are set for Friday and Saturday, September 9th and 10th, and we are encouraging everyone to participate in the 9/11 ceremony and celebration that we have planned on September 11th. We have secured the gazebo park from 2:00 to 5:00. We are working with First Presbyterian on securing their church for a practice space for the mass choir, that we will sing patriotic tunes and the national anthem as the Sheriff's Department presents a color guard. The police department has told us that they will have their ATV there, and the fire department has told us that they will have at least one fire truck there. We also are encouraging churches and other organizations to have family-friendly activities, and there's no cost to be there. We are opening it up to anyone who wants to just come out and be represented and have a good time, and we're all praying for good weather. We have various flyers. One mentions some of our partners, and the other one is a stronger appeal to singers, which is just a personal interest of mine, to get people there for the choir. And then we also are sharing these posters with organizations that are participating, where they can put their project and the date of the project, whether it's Friday or Saturday, they can list the time and where they are giving back to the community and who the contact is for their project. And down at the bottom is a link where volunteers can register, and also on our flyers are links where people can register flyers, projects. We have gotten a little blip of publicity about this. We're hoping to get a good bit more. We would appreciate any help that you can give us in spreading the word. Thank you very much, I appreciate the, you will, okay, you'll let me know? Okay, thank you.
And just so you know, just to close out our presentation, our fall cleanup will be on that Saturday, September 10th. We'll be meeting down at the Boardman Pavilion from 9:00 to 11:00. It's only a two-hour timeframe, and we're hoping to clean up all of downtown and hopefully most of Broadway as well. So anyone's welcome to join us and volunteer. It goes very quick, and you're right, we can fill up a lot of trash packs very quickly. Becky Mockerman filled up nine all by herself, so. And she's a, she's a mighty fighting spirit for downtown cleanup, so. Thank you all very much, and if you have any additional questions, please give me a call. Thank you.
Maybe we've had it a little earlier this year.
Yes, we definitely have. It took a bit of, thank you very much. PRS Stormwater, Council of, probably asked that the committee wanted to hold questions on this particular presentation for the end, but they kind of got it where they hoped to answer questions unfolded one at a time. And so they had all your questions, we would like to do it again, the presentation doesn't do it out, which is our home, absolutely understand that.
Let's get that out of the way. Praise Jesus is over. Thank you, yes, that's quite an achievement that a bunch of people worked hard on. But we're glad that's, thank you. It's a big effort by a whole lot of folks. And all we got left is to clean up now, thank goodness. If it don't stop raining, that's gonna get worse. But thank you. Um, okay, there it is, all right. Briefly, would like to give you all some overview of some of our stormwater information that we've been working on over the last few years, and a brief insight into some of the things that are coming. To begin with, I would, is this, there it goes, give you a brief summary about the PRS-1 work, which we had quite a bit of funded through the original appropriations. In that original list that the voters approved, we had 12 projects identified. As of today, 10 of those are complete. One of those is funded and on hold because it's upstream of Arena Park, and we don't want to do the improvements there because that would just hurt Arena Park more. So that funding is being carried over. The last project is the Arena Park project, which just turned out to be way bigger than we could afford to do under the PRS-1 funding. That bigger project will be listed in PRS-2, and, and with that one complete, then we would go back and do the last one that's upstream of there, and therefore complete all of those originally listed projects from PRS-1. In addition to that, we have been able to add seven projects and four watershed studies funded through the PRS-1 revenues. The big one of those seven is the flood wall project that the mayor mentioned, and that got finished last week except for the tying up the loose ends. But we were fortunate to be able to do some extra work for our citizens within the existing, the revenues that were coming in, and so we're very excited about that. Part of the reason that we were able to do that is some of the projects just came in well under our originally projected budgets, so there was some revenue there. We did three of the projects with city crews, which meant we didn't have to pay contract labor, and by doing that, we saved quite a bit of money on some of the smaller scale projects. Those funds and more revenue came in than was projected. We were able to do those seven extra projects and pay for four of these watershed studies that I'll move into now. Over the last three years, we have been doing watershed studies to identify problems that, maybe to quantify problems that we knew about, and find out if there are other things that just haven't jumped up in front of us yet. We have done eight watersheds that we've studied. I need to tell you all about that. There, can you see that very well? The blue lines are the main streams in town. We didn't study all of those, but that gives you a sense of how extensive the channels are through our community. The, one of the watersheds that we did is the Arena Creek, and if you can see it, the blue line is the stream channels, and there's actually two sides to that. We went through those and have identified seven possible projects that could be done in Arena Creek, the big one being by the park. We have looked at this area known as the C4 ditch, which is basically west of Kings Highway, south of William, Camelia, and Edgewood area. And we've had complaints in those areas for years where the ditch kind of wiggles around in between their houses, so we looked through that one. Good Hope area, we've actually started the first phase of that with our crews, working down around Sheridan. That has been on hold for a few weeks because of some conflicts, but we'll get back to that soon, I hope, and get that finished. Then there's the bigger part downstream to be done. We studied the area from Capaha Pond west to the Walker Branch and identified some problem areas there, one very large project and one smaller scale project. We looked at the Lisa Branch watershed and the Civilly Branch watershed. I'm showing them here in one picture, it was actually two reports. Between those two, there's 10 potential projects that could be done. I would point out that we have studied, the modeling that we did focused on the street crossings and the closed conveyances, box culverts, pipe runs. We didn't have the money to really do the, the open channel modeling, which would have required magnitudes, more money to survey all of that and put it in there. So the work, the projects we are talking about are improving street crossings or pipe runs where we've got closed conveyance. The open channels weren't included in that. So there may be problems with some open channel areas that are beyond what we've identified here. Westfield Branch is basically north of Themis along Mount Auburn, running back over towards Silver Springs, north of the St. Francis Hospital area. Similar complaints to the C4 area where the ditches run behind in between the houses, and, and we wanted to check out some problems we knew about there. Upper Walker Branch picks up the eastern fork of the Walker Branch upstream from Broadway, and we've identified five potential projects there. The red lines, polygons are very rough approximations of where those watersheds are in town. You can see that we focused a lot of attention in the central and northern parks of town where we knew we had some trouble. You will note that we haven't looked at the western and northern extremities. There are some watersheds out there, but the part of those that is in city limits is pretty small, and those watersheds are quite large. One of those alone, the Ramsey Creek watershed, that study alone, if we had done it, would have been in excess of a quarter of a million dollars just for the study. We didn't believe that it was worth that kind of investment to find out what little bit of the city would be impacted by it. So we didn't look at some of those extremity areas. And all eight watersheds have been reviewed and 35 projects identified. The council had indicated, and Mr. Meyer had requested, could we find something that maybe could provide some more improvement beyond what we've already done with available PRS-1 funding? We've looked through our list of things, and, and we've come up with a two-pronged project, if you will. And I apologize, I thought I'd dug a slide in here to show you where this is, and I must not have executed the click and drag move properly, because that didn't happen. At any rate, I will back up and try to, whoop, nope, one more, there. The, the projects that we propose that we could do with funding, can y'all see the red dot? This is William, and the ditches you see turns and goes down, it comes off the big hill on the west side of that, that valley, and then turns and goes and wiggles around those houses and comes out behind First Community Bank. There is a, where'd the dot go? There it is. A hill right in here, and we would propose to just cut through that hill, put an L-shaped pipe run through here as an overflow, bring that water through so it doesn't have to go back in that little ditch behind all those homes that gets overloaded pretty bad. As well, we would then, we are familiar with the standing water down by Golden on the property that Mr. Diamond owns next to the car wash, where the cattails get head high through the summer and maintenance issues. There's a problem there with the grade of some of the culverts. We're proposing that we could put a pipe across Bloomfield that would be intentionally set low enough to catch that last bit of water that stands and get that out of the system so that proper maintenance could be done on that ditch. Those two projects together could be done for less than $300,000, we believe, and those funds are available from the existing PRS-1 monies. We can pursue that if, if we so choose, would look for guidance on that. But we did come up with that project that we could move to very quickly and solve some issues around some historically long-term complaint areas and problem areas. We would propose to do that by contract, because our guys are covered up and we've still got that Good Hope project to work on as well, so we wouldn't propose to do this by city crew. Going into the future, we know there will be discussions on broad stormwater considerations, and some of the things that need to be part of those discussions are the legal aspects and limitations that are always there. What responsibilities do we have? What authorities do we have? What liabilities do we have? That would need to be part of that discussion. Clearly, priority setting and good cost estimates will be necessary. One thing we would point out that is fairly common sense, we would need to think about the order of work within a watershed so we don't do something upstream before we fix something downstream and create a problem down there before we do the downstream work. And there's also going to be a layer of environmental permitting on some of these projects, which will, I believe can all be accomplished. Some of it may extend the timeframe of getting the project to construction, because a couple of those are going to be individual 404 permits, which can take 10 months to get. I don't perceive any problem in getting them, you just got to go through the process. And with that, I will step aside and let Steve give you a little bit of history about some of the stuff we've done in recent years.
Okay, several, you know, I've been here a little while, 39 years, so I've dealt with a lot of stormwater concerns. If we go back several years looking at stormwater, big, big picture here. In 1986, Town Plaza flooded, two facilities. They got the ball rolling to do the LaSalle Basin, Walker Branch, Cape La Croix, the big channels down through town. That, that's what got that moving. That's made a huge difference in, in the big picture of stormwater. You know, I'm sure there's, through the years, some channels have saved us millions of dollars, because any of you that's been around in some of these rain events, it would have happened again. I'm pretty sure here, you know, we'd go along with that. In 2001, we contracted to do a stormwater master plan study, and in that study was six recommended projects. Five of them's been done. And then before the vote of the stormwater attacks in 2008, we added more projects, and 10 of 12, like Stan said, have been done, been completed. And we, like he said, we've done additional projects with city crews. But in, working with engineering firms and the priorities, we looked at the worst case from fatalities, and then, you know, they categorize, they prioritize when you're dealing with the engineering firm. It goes, you know, homes flooded, we're talking about whole, homes flooded, subdivisions flooded, major street flooding. Some of you remember Terry Lane, the whole, almost the whole subdivision flooded. We don't have anymore. Major culvert and bridge flooding, small watershed flooding. We've got rid of most of that, and then, and overall program, now we're down to backyards, water on streets in a heavy rain event, and that's a lesser priority, but it's still a problem. So now we've got watershed studies to identify potential improvements for smaller neighborhood areas, and that's where Stan finished up. And, then, ask questions?
So the solution that you guys have provided for projects, what were the other projects? Is this one identified as being fairly important or just the least expensive? Can you help me?
Sure. We looked at, there's a couple of projects that have had long-term complaints that already have funding that we haven't gotten to. There's four of those that we've got charged to do with our crews. Hopefully we'll get those done within the next year. But we were looking at, what are some of the longer-term issues?
What are those? What are those?
One of them is at Ferndale and Nottingham. There's a pipe between the houses that goes from the road to the ditch, bottom of three hills, and big rains, it floods. Bigger pipe from the street to the ditch in the back is basically what that project amounts to. We didn't have easements there some time ago. The people have agreed to do that unless somebody moved and we got a new property owner. That's one. There's a problem with a decaying pipe near the Bluff City Beer off Seamers. There's a stormwater drain that does not have an easement that drains the water from Seamers out to the interstate. We would relocate that and fill that pipe that shouldn't be there with grout, and they're getting sinkholes on the pipe that's causing some problems for their maintenance people. There's one at Glenview, no.
Glenview, Melrose.
Melvee, Grandview in Melrose. Again, three hills coming together, and we've got water running down the streets that ends up in a gentleman's backyard because the inlets aren't big enough in the street, and we would improve that situation probably with a trench drain. And then the last one is, oh, West Rodney at Adeline, not far from Arena Park, over the hill there. There are a number of homes where oddly the pipes and ditches, the ditch has a 24-inch pipe crossing the street that goes in the ditch that isn't as wide as this podium. And, and then the, the pipe that that runs into goes under a carport and driveway and out to the street to a 15-inch pipe. So we would clean that up with proper. So we would clean that up with proper pipe sizes on proper grades, and hopefully, those gentlemen, there's two gentlemen there that actually get water in their homes, and so we're hopefully can fix that and, or make some improvements anyway.
As far as you've got scheduled over the next year?
Hopefully get them the next year. So those being done, we looked at what's affordable, what can be done that won't create a problem downstream in a watershed, what can be done fairly quickly without a year's worth of design and surveying and permitting and easements and all of that stuff. And we kept coming back to the Camelia Drive complaints that have been around for a long time, and the problem at Bloomfield, Derek Golden, with just the maintenance problem, it isn't really a flooding problem, but that water just can't get out because the pipes downstream are a little bit off grade from whenever they were put in. This project doesn't require any environmental permitting, it doesn't require any authorities from MoDOT or Federal Highway Administration. It's all in public right of way, so we don't have to get easements from anybody. So that made it a real easy get-to-it-fast-and-get-it-done-fast project. So that's how we came to that one.
What's the cost per property owner?
Having figured that out, I could go through and count the properties on that C four ditch and get you a number, but I don't know that off the top of my head. There's probably two dozen properties down in that Camelia Edgewood area that are impacted by the problem.
So maybe fifteen, ten, fifty dollars?
That'd be a good guess, yes, sir.
And is that comparable to some of the other contracts you guys worked at, or is that less expensive per property owner?
I haven't looked at it in a per property owner on some of the others as well. Some of the others would be quite a bit higher because there's only half a dozen properties that are impacted. One that comes to mind is the Ferndale Nottingham project. I think there's five properties there that are impacted, and that project is probably on the order of a hundred thousand, so they may be more like twenty thousand per property instead of ten.
And in a project like that, how did the problem come about and which responsibility is it?
It came about because that's a very old subdivision and drainage wasn't very well considered when the developers built the subdivision, and they just kind of rerouted natural streams where they were, or little, the small ditches, and moved them around so they could get the lots formed up and get the houses built, and wherever the drainage went, it went. And this, how old's that subdivision? Fifty, sixty years? So a lot of it's come about, just it's very old, and back in those days, there were very few rules, and the developers just kind of pushed things around, and people bought houses, and that's what they ended up with. And there wasn't adequate capacity given to those channels, nor consideration given to the maintenance issues that come with that, and no easements were given for all of that either. They just went in and built what they wanted to and pushed the ditch around where they needed to, to accommodate building the house, and that was all just done on the property, and nothing was conveyed to the city in the way of easements or rights of way to, for future maintenance.
Can you explain how we are preventing some of these issues today?
We have quite a bit more restrictive rules and more oversight over the development process now. We don't get into the drainage pattern on an individual lot, but for the subdivision that's looked at, they have to provide stormwater detention to help offset the increased runoff rates from the development. They also have to do some water quality improvements to try to mitigate some water pollution issues. We do review where things are going and how it's configured, and is it realistic? Is it reasonable? Is it sized reasonably? They have to provide us the, how they're going to drain their plan and provide us some reports that quantify their flow numbers. In particular, our code requires for the flood control detention, let me make sure I get this, say this right, because it's a little complex, the discharge rate from their detention area cannot exceed, and this is after development, the flow rate cannot exceed the fifteen-year event flow rate in the undeveloped condition. So if it's grass now, they have to determine what's the amount of water that would leave that site at what rate in a fifteen-year, twenty-minute rain event. They come up with that number, then they got to calculate, okay, with development on a twenty-five-year, twenty-minute event, how much water's coming, but they have to restrict that flow to that lesser undeveloped number, so they're having to hold water back much more than they used to.
And does this review stop at Development Services, or does it make it to Public Works?
Public Works, Development Services work together in the Development Review Group. We meet every week, and we will look at it collaboratively.
Okay. Sir? Go ahead, Joe. And then, is the city still maintaining these detention basins? Or well, I should say, we used to maintain them when the subdivision's finished, is that still the case?
No. We have twenty-three that we maintain that have carried over through time. New developments that have detention areas, the owner or the homeowners association is charged with the responsibility of maintenance.
Okay. And I understand why the city would have developed that type of policy, but is it challenging to get the homeowners association or Development Group to maintain them?
Absolutely.
I mean, I would think that although it minimizes responsibility and liability for the city, if you end up with a problem that gets created, there's no one taking care of it. I mean, there's not going to be a ton of ancillars. The homeowners association has little to know because.
That's true.
When property owners don't pay to maintain these detention basins.
And many of them don't know that that's part of the responsibility of the neighborhood residents, but it is a problem, no question. Many of those end up with nuisance abatement notifications, and then that goes through that process.
So I challenge you by asking the question, what is a better solution for this problem? I mean, I'm assuming it's not possible for the city to levy a different type of tax or fee to that subdivision than other ones. And the city has shown through changing the policy that they don't want to maintain detention basins anymore. They've been maintaining too many, but the real problem that I think we have to recognize is that the detention basins were created so we don't have to do this.
Right.
Thirty years after these subdivisions were built. So then, since we started requiring people to build detention basins, then we started having to maintain them, but we didn't want to do that. So then we put that off onto the developer to then leave when the project's completed, and now no one maintains it. So we're really ending up with this problem again.
Unfortunately true. Perhaps it's not quite as bad as it was, but we're still on that path where homeowners associations don't have the resources, don't have the awareness that they've got that responsibility to take that over, and it becomes a burden on them. If the city was to propose that, okay, we would start taking care of these, we're going to need a lot more manpower and a lot more equipment. And that's where the city's rub comes, is just being able to staff to do that.
But the idea is that we avoid these problems, because now we have fifteen thousand dollar per homeowner problems, which is pretty excessive, I think, these spending. But what choice do we have when this is what's going?
Yes.
And I think Joe's brought up some, an interesting point that you hinted at, which is, we have, I guess, a pretty good system for approving a development. Watershed, looking at the drainage, but when it breaks up into little pieces, we have one building being put on one site, and the developer decides to make his ten feet higher than everyone else in the neighborhood. Suddenly, you have a system that would have drained, that would have worked, that maybe already had a natural flow, and suddenly, it's not. And then the, and you have no recourse within the current approach we're taking, other than homeowners and neighbors to sue each other, which is hardly ideal. In fact, that's happening one block over from where I live.
That's correct.
As you know, on Copperfield. And so, I mean, I'd love to see us address this in a more continuous way, where we are looking at the initial development in an area with watersheds and the drainage, but then maintaining that regardless of whether it's a single developer or six developers or twenty-seven developers, where each piece of that continues to be a contributing part of the overall drainage approach, then we don't have, you know, I'm going to build my house higher, then I don't have to worry about drainage because it's all going to be in everyone else's basement. So again, I'd challenge us to figure out ways to move in that direction for the protection of everyone in every neighborhood that sees development.
And that's the rub, is where do we, how do we solve that puzzle? That's a twelve-by-twelve group.
Otherwise, we'll have, you know, higher and higher development throughout the city, and that's obviously not sustainable.
Right.
Well, unfortunately, a developer develops these, the lots are easy to develop, and the ones that have, that they dump all the water to, the ones that they sell off, and then that's where the rub comes to.
Yeah.
Mayor and council, when we have our future study session to discuss stormwater, those are some of the issues that we would like to discuss, the history of stormwater regulations within the city, things that we can do during the subdivision review process to avoid some of those issues, not only for stormwater, but if we had mass grading plans for subdivisions, it would also help with ADA accessibility for sidewalks and driveways and things like that as well. So that's a more comprehensive discussion we would like to have with you at a future date, also to get into some of the legalities about our liability by taking on some of these bigger problems as well. So we are looking forward to having a much more comprehensive stormwater discussion with you in the next month or two.
We asked to do that, and you're going to prepare that for us for a side full study session.
Correct.
Special study session.
There'll be a special study session, that will be our only topic, so we can focus a lot of attention on it and have a very thorough dialogue.
Do you anticipate what month that would be?
We're probably looking at October. We will have Bruce Taylor send out a doodle or something, looking at some potential baits where we're all available.
You know, I'd be interested, again, following on what Joe said earlier about the projects that were maybe in your second tier. I mean, you've identified two you think you could do now, they're feasible, they're reasonable, they've been something that have been on the list for a while, but, you know, the ones that were, you thought about, that almost made it on that list, that maybe have one piece missing, you'd have to get one property owner to give a permission, you know. So I think that next group that, at least from my perspective, would be useful to look at to say, look, we have watershed studies complete here, these out of the thirty-five you mentioned on the total list, this is the short term, and then maybe develop those as we have the next study session dedicated to that and see what, you know, if we have additional revenue, if we see ways we can reduce spending in other areas if the costs come in less, you know, as you mentioned, what could, what would be on the next short list?
We can develop that.
Of the eight watershed studies that have been completed, and all the associated projects with those, I assume most of those are projected to be part of PRS two.
That's correct.
Do we know what those projects are, what those costs are?
Yes. We've got a, we've got a project conceptual scope and conceptual cost estimate for each one of those that, you know, they've been prepared over the last couple of years, so, but costs haven't changed much in that timeframe, so I'm not too worried about adjustments for passage of time. But we do have each project identified and a cost estimate prepared as part of the watershed studies. Each project that they came up with has a, and some of them have a couple of alternatives. Do we want to look at a one-year, twenty-four-hour event or a two-year, twenty-hour, twenty-minute event? We've got some different layers of service, levels of service that we could pinpoint as we've gone through this. So some of them have more than one alternative, but we want to look at a five-year event, twenty-five-year, twenty-four-hour level of service as opposed to a two-year, twenty-four-hour event level of service, cost change, but we've got that data available to consider.
I think all of the council will be interested in seeing the studies and the projects and the cost, just so we can familiarize ourselves. We're in different wards, different areas of the city, and it'd be nice to know where those projects are, what ward they're in.
Sure.
And what the costs are, so.
Future study session to give a lot more information.
Good.
Direct information.
But we do, the purpose of the watershed studies was to identify problem areas, some we knew about through complaints or own awareness, some just, let's look at the whole watershed and see if some other things come up, and some of them did. But the purpose of that was so we could then use this information to leverage into whatever we're going to do in PRS two. Right. So we've got valid cost estimates and project scopes that were thought about carefully in advance, instead of having to rush and do something at the end.
Well, you don't want piecemeal things either. You want to do the project and do it right.
Exactly. Within a watershed, we need to think about how the water's going to move through so we don't create a new problem, and then we need to think about citywide prioritization. We've got all of these to think about, which ones are in the top five, which one are in the bottom five.
Certainly, based on what you said, and of course, I'll defer to the city manager in terms of timing and funding, but if we can do those projects you mentioned in there at the top of your list, there's fewer obstacles in the way of doing those, I'd certainly be of support of talking about those in the near future, because again, it's, there aren't the other obstacles that you mentioned would be with developing some of these other projects that will take a little more time and deliberation as we sort through what we can do, what we need, and then what we need to do, and those are two different questions.
Yes. We can develop that. Try to, anyway.
Anyone else?
Thank you for your attention.
Appreciate it.
How long ago did we start the watershed studies?
Three years, I believe.
Three years ago, yeah. So we've been thinking ahead for three years about this moment, and we're a year and a half away from PRS, so. And then we have to marry these together, the parks projects and the stormwater projects, and determine, you know, how much we're going to do of each. And so it is a pretty big process, and that's the reason we needed to start now, and we'll be getting, we'll get that information to you as we, as we work through it.
Do you think those two projects are something we can move forward to pretty quickly?
Yeah, I think I need, John and I need to talk about cash flow, and then we'll be, if it's something that the council thinks those two projects are, would be good ones to try to do, then I think we can do those. I assume we would be using the projects that we're not completing in this PRS, we would use that fund, those funds to go out and do these and move.
But you're right, I mean, the discussion about Arena Park fixes versus parks and rec improvements at Arena Park, those are conjoined because you don't do want to do one without the other, the one makes the other more feasible.
Right, or are you willing to have part of Arena Park continue to flood once every other year? Is that something you're going to willing to take? Because you don't want to spend six million dollars to do the fix that doesn't flood for every fifty years. So it's, you know, there's a lot of give and take in that, and so.
Those every fifty-year floods seem to come a lot more than fifty years.
Two percent chance.
Two percent chance every single year. Yeah. This is really helpful, I certainly appreciate it.
Good.
Okay, and we'll look forward to an October, date sometime in October. All right. We're here to go for the council on any item, but it's not on the agenda.
Two presentations tonight, we have the children artwork presentation, your old gator will be here to do that. Notice the artwork is down from last time, so we'll be doing that, that's something that's done yearly.
It's been a year, huh?
It has, it has. So, and then the second one, Molly will introduce us to that, the Tech Fest Civic Hackathon demonstration, they're going to be here, and do you want to comment more on that, or?
Dr. Stapleton and Brian Holman will be here to tell us about copper tape and the purpose of the hackathon, and if the winner of the hackathon will be here, he can do a demonstration of their product, and we'll talk a little bit about how to move that forward as well.
Communications and reports, council, do you have things you'd like to report?
I want to mention the Missouri Main Street Connection Awards, won by Cape, won by Cape and Jackson, I'll mention them as well.
I'd like to comment on the railroad relocation, staff's dedication to that, that's been a real fast slow project. I really commend staff for the efforts that they've made to complete that on schedule to transfer through a DIP rail. We got through, got through working with the rail.
Yes.
And their engineers, and as Stan said, we're down to, down to cleaning. Will you be here at seven? To recap that just a little bit, that's a major project that is kind of one of a kind.
It's awesome.
If you hope so.
What's her career anyway, right?
And then I want to, I want to comment, I attended and participated in our Cape West Rotary 50 Year, and what Rotary, our Rotary Club has been able to do in 50 years, and then reflect on that fact, I wrote my monthly column on this, but not just Rotary, but all the service clubs, and what they mean to our community, really kind of a backbone, backbone for our, our community. I want to come in on that. Any others?
Salt? I attended the Back to the Blue event at Cape County Art last week, and I'd like to comment on that, and I'd like to comment on the Senior Information Day that's coming up, that's sponsored by seniors in Waltham together.
Mayor, I'd like to comment on an event coming up this weekend in arena park. Jason Barak.
Anything about that?
I know a lot about it. And then also, I'd like to, Scott's been setting up some meetings with different staff, and I'd like to just give a, I got to meet with Steve Coles last week, and just do a quick overview of that.
Anyone else?
All right, then we'll have, the currency fraud is listed on the agenda. The consent agenda tonight, we have first, the second and third readings. Number two is the complex of interest that we pass each year by state statute, we have to pass that. Number three is the quit cleaning deed for Vantage Drive. Number four is the Old Town Cape subdivision for Marquette Tech. Number five will be the interinitial operation funds for indoor sports complex, that appropriation. Number six is the purchase of three drones, casino funds. Number seven is retail market study, using, also using casino revenue funds, second, third reading of that. Number eight and nine is a rezoning for Marquette Tech, second, third reading of those, we had the hearing last time. And then number 10 is the second, third reading for the park improvement projects for just the ones for this fiscal year that was passed last time. That's the second and third readings, are there any of those that you'd like to remove? Not, we have the resolutions. Number 11 is awarding the contract to Lapi Concrete Cement Finishing for the Bloomfield Road Phase 5, been waiting on that project a while, got good bids on that, and that will move forward. Number 12 is license indemnity agreement for the Christmas decorations with Old Town Cape through January of '22. Number 13 is license indemnity agreement for the lighted sign for Modern Technology at 1936 Broadway. Number 14 is resolution, the amendment of the development agreement for Motel, for Mid America Hotels Corporation. If you recall, we worked with them to come up with funding for Jim Drury Way, which is additional right of way, and the initial development agreement only had the property for the building, the parking lot. This adds now additional property they're giving to the city for Jim Drury Way.
But it looks like about half an acre, is that right?
Sounds like it's about right. Number 15 is a entrance out of the business park, awarding that, construction of that entrance to Buick Excavating. This is the entrance to SI 03, that's getting ready to start the construction out there. And we're using the funds that we got from sale of property in order to build the entrance as part of that agreement, didn't use all the funds, obviously. And then number 16, another long-awaited project is South Sprig Street Road Restoration. This is the sinkholes, Robertson Contractors will get this, this is a spanning bridge that will get us reopened with, with emergency funds from MoDOT through the emergency relief fund from the flooding. It's about a $4 million project, including the design, it's 80/20 funds, we're getting, so 20% is about $800, $800,000, and then we're getting a grant for $100,000 from Delta Regional, so our funds are $700,000, which we're taking out of our, our motor fuel tax that comes back to us. So that's how that one is funded.
You just have to read all of the agencies involved with that to understand why it took so long, I think.
Yes. Plus, you got Congress not passing budgets and continuing resolutions, which entered into it forever, and.
We've got to do, we've got to do ribbon cutting for that when it's all finished, just to dance on the ground.
Absolutely.
And not fall through.
Already under, already under, it's going to get underway.
Yes, sir. Council number 17, we, count, staff would like to remove this item. This is an item that we received just late today, a change to the agreement with Arturus. We didn't think it was fair to you to ask you to, to look at that and act on it tonight, so we'll be presenting that in the next meeting. So we'll be asking for a modification to, to remove that.
We'll have to adjust that when we approve the agenda, removing item 17 from the consent one.
I guess just removing it from the agenda altogether.
Right.
We can just do that at the time of the, of the adoption of the agenda.
So that's what we're going to do then.
18 is a license indemnity agreement with Prodigy, this is for a temporary sign on Lexington through March of 18. And 19 is the preliminary plat for Red Hawk Collins, which Mr. Bertrand mentioned. Number 20 is an item we went ahead and removed from the consent agenda, we removed this because the, the actual rates that we, we get from the county, we actually got the final assessments done, and so we had to tweak those, I think they went down a little bit, John? And so this allows you to make that amendment to the, to those new rates.
Well, read the, read the second and third, and then we'll need a, a motion to re-approve the amendment. Okay?
Any other of those you want to remove, or note any conflicts? Not, we just have two new ordinances, we have stop signs at various locations for approval to that, to that schedule, and I think we have one that we're concerned about.
Yeah, I've been contacted by different residents in the Wyandotte subdivision, and one that has a question, and so really wanted to understand why staff recommended to put a stop sign there, and if at all possible, I would recommend that to the yield sign.
Staff has had quite a few conversations around this afternoon after you asked the question. I talked with the police, and they were okay, I think initially they had said they'd rather have a stop sign, but they're okay now with the yield sign at that location. And so we would have to, it's a different section of the schedule, so I'd prepare that the next time, so I guess we would need an amendment. Can we do an amendment, just remove that, that particular part of the stop sign from the schedule? So we just need to amend that. So we'll adopt the agenda, and then we're actually on that item, I think we'll.
Well, I'll read the first reading, and we need a motion to the second, and then you can recommend the amendment to remove that item, that we'll come up with next.
So the first reading of the yield will be next.
All right.
Last item, we have, is bill number 16, 149, and this is, as Mr. Bertrand mentioned earlier, is a change in the Development Code of Chapter 25 regarding retaining walls, landscaping, buffer yards of stream. Questions about? Okay? Would like to note, on your memo, that we'll want to note it during the, during the meeting, we did do a review of the city's policy to conform with the Missouri Open Meetings and Records Law under our ordinance that we had, we now are reviewing this every two years, and placing the fact that we did review it in the meeting with this memo, and so.
And this was the memo in, in your packet, and I'm drawing your attention to the staff determining that the current policy complies with, and no recommended amendment of current policy needs to be done at this time, but we'll, we'll note that during the record session.
That's all I have.
How far do we want to move, how much, that, or please, your next session? I think, I think we need to have a post-episode, not a big one, to have a communication, or maybe, first one, and then, right, is that, number 131, number 133. Someone, I'm going to, thank God. All right. Hi, folks. Hey, welcome to the, 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 next session.
I had to answer, fuck, I'm going to go. I don't want to. I don't want to. I had to answer, fuck, I'm going to go. I got electrocuted.
I got electrocuted.